Good evening and welcome to the Putnam Valley Board of Education Meeting of October 12th, 2017. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, I'd like to resolve to approve the minutes for the business meeting of September 28th, 2017.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Before we move on to our presentations, excuse me, I'd like to ask the board members if they would mind a quick change in agenda. Our student representatives are involved in our play and would like to do their report early, so can we start our meeting with our student representative's report?
Yes, sounds good.
Everybody's in agreement?
Sure.
Take it away, student representatives.
As the fall sports season comes to an end, we want to give a special congratulations to the girls soccer team. They've done exceptionally well this season and are undefeated with a record of 11 to zero, making them the league champions. So congratulations for all of their hard work.
On another note, the field hockey team attended the Support Connection Walk. Support Connect is a not-for-profit organization that provides emotional, social, and educational support to women, their families, and friends affected by breast and ovarian cancer. Field hockey team members walked together in support for this cause. Finally, homecoming was this past weekend. The festivities were well-attended and everyone had a bunch of fun.
The Catalyst SAT Prep Boot Camp was held just last week, and it was generously sponsored by the PTA. The event teaches students helpful strategies they can use when they're taking the SAT. As always, thank you to the PTA for making this event possible.
The National Honor Society is organizing a blood drive. It will be held at the high school on Tuesday, October 17th. One out of every three people will need blood during their lives, and by donating blood, you could be saving another person's life. Students and staff are encouraged to donate. If you are not a student or staff member, you can still donate blood at the Putnam Valley Firehouse on the same day. Stop by between 2:30 and 8:30 p.m.
Teen Mojo wants to invite students to their new program called Girls Standing Strong. It's a unique wellness program designed to support, connect, and empower young girls and families. Workshops, classes, instructors, and an online platform work together to help girls build confidence, self-esteem, improve body language, self-awareness, physical health, and well-being. The launch party is going to be held October 21st of this year from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Teen Mojo campus, and all students are encouraged to attend.
Finally, we want to invite you to attend the Benefit Concert and Potluck Dinner in a collaborative effort to provide much-needed help to the islands of Puerto Rico and the Caribbean region. The event will be held on Tuesday, October 17th. The Potluck Dinner is from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. in the high school cafeteria, and the concert is from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the high school performing arts center. We encourage you to attend both. It will be a fun event and supports a great cause. Visit the district website homepage for a copy of the flyer advertising the event. We hope to see you all there.
All right, thank you. I'm trying to catch up with my calendar as you were talking. Thank you very much, girls. And whenever you have to leave, that's perfectly fine. And next, I'd like Dr. Wills to do our first presentation, which is an introduction.
Yes, I would like to have the opportunity here to introduce our new school resource officer, Deputy Ryan McMahon. And we've enjoyed very much having our new officer here. And he's gotten to know our students, he's gotten to know more about how everything works in our school district, and has already collaborated on a number of issues that do take place in schools where there are concerns with various student issues, safety issues, and we're very pleased that we have Deputy McMahon with us, and I think he would like to introduce himself as well.
Sure. Like Dr. Wills said, I'm Deputy McMahon. This is my first time being a school resource officer. I've had some experience in the schools before, though. Prior to being in the Sheriff's Department, I was a teacher for a while. So I think the combination of being a teacher, being in the schools, being a sheriff's officer, this is probably a really good fit. I've also worked here, stationed out here in that substation for about a year, so I'm pretty familiar with the community. And I think everything's going pretty well so far, great faculty, staff, great students, so I'm happy to be here.
You're greatly welcome. We really do work in partnership with the sheriff's office and always have, so the fact that you have that teacher background is fabulous.
Yes, and he's interested, the deputy is interested in coming into classes, talking about law and justice issues.
Yes, some of that, some of that, too, I did this year.
Thank you.
It's great, welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, for our second presentation, I'll ask Jill to introduce our presenters.
Okay, tonight we have our external auditing firm, Chris Cobb, he's from O'Connor Davies, and Leslie Tillitson. They'll be presenting the results of the annual audit.
Good evening. Before I forget to say a few words, we really appreciate the opportunity to serve the board as the external auditors, and knowing that your schedule is...
We're designed for short people.
And knowing that you have a very busy schedule, we appreciate you taking the time out to let us present the results. And I'd also like to thank the finance office, Jill, and Agada for all the assistance during the course of the audit. It's not real pleasurable to have us sitting there for a week or so, and they did a fabulous job getting us documents and providing us with information. So I put a PowerPoint together just to keep you from having to flip through the financials, and I put some of the pertinent information in the slides. So what I'm going to do is start with an overview and go over some of the required communications. We'll talk about your 2017 general fund, how you did compared to budget. We'll discuss some of your major revenues, a little bit of a five-year history on those revenues so you can track them. We'll talk about expenditures, the same thing, a five-year history of that. And then we'll talk about your fund balance and your general fund and kind of give you a snapshot of where you've been and where you are now. So to begin with, we always start with management's responsibility. The board are the individuals that are responsible for setting the tone for your financial policies. So you're responsible for selecting and implementing the appropriate accounting policies for the school district of your size and your complexity. You need to be able to present your financial statements in accordance with the U.S. GAAP, and they were. You need to establish and maintain internal controls to safeguard the school district's assets. And you need to be in compliance with all the laws, the regulations, the provisions of your contracts and agreements that you have. And as I said in the meeting, we would think the most important to provide us with all the financial records so we can conduct our audit. Our responsibility is to perform and express an opinion. We're very pleased to say that you received an unmodified opinion. That's the highest level of assurance an auditing firm can give a client. We also, on a test basis, we review transactions to make sure that you are in compliance with the laws and regulations, your contracts. We look at bids, we look at checks, we look at your contracts just to make sure. We need to communicate in writing any deficiencies in internal control that you may have, and we're very happy to say again that you had the lowest level of deficiencies, called control deficiencies. And those are more suggestions on how we see it done better, and you might be able to improve your conditions. It's no, nothing bad. We advise management of the appropriateness of your accounting policies, and again, for district, your size and complexity, we feel they're appropriate. We communicate any fraud or illegal acts that were noted during the audit. During the course of the audit, we interview employees, we send our related party questionnaires to the board, we do fraud questionnaires, and again, nobody reported anything back to us that was related to fraud. In fact, they all said they were very pleased with your reporting policies and how you're open to hear from anybody. We didn't encounter any significant difficulties. There were no uncorrected or corrected misstatements. In other words, adjusting journal entries at the end of the audit. There are no disagreements with management over anything that we reviewed, and we were independent in all aspects of being with the district. So again, here's a snapshot of your general fund. Again, the main operating fund of the district, this is what's voted on by the public. In addition to this, you also have a capital fund, you have a special aid fund, a debt service fund, school lunch, and a special purpose. But again, we're going to focus on the general fund since that's the main operating fund of the district. We start in the first column, third number up from the bottom, you see a negative $2,005,000. That number is, when you adopted your budget, that's the amount of surplus that you had decided to utilize. $688,000 of that was for encumbrances, and another $1,008,000 was the tax, you appropriated your surplus to reduce the taxes on the public, to try to stay within the cap and to make sure you didn't raise taxes too high. You can see in the second column, your final budget, you didn't modify that number, it stayed at the same amount. And then we go to the actual column, and again, instead of utilizing surplus, you actually generated $285,000 of the surplus, and you replenished what you didn't use and put it back into the fund balance for use in future budget years. On the right-hand side, the last column, the variance with the budget, you can see how you generated that surplus. You can see in the first line, you had a surplus on revenues of about $537,000, and you had $1,382,000 of expenses where you came in under budget. So that generated your $1.9 million budgetary surplus that you had during the course of the year. Leslie will take you through some of the actual revenues and show you how you generated that surplus.
Okay, so these are your four major revenue categories that represent about 98% of the total revenues. You have your property tax, actual was $30.7 million compared to last year of $30.8 million, down about $130,000. You have your school tax relief reimbursement, current year $4.7 million compared to prior year of $5 million, that was down about $363,000. You have your state aid, current year $10,00365 compared to last year of $9.9. And you have your refund of prior year expenditures, down about $32,000 from $135,000 to $102,000.
And if we look at the five-year history of these, you can see your property tax. I grouped them into a subtotal, just so you can see, because that's the amount that's subject to the tax cap. And you can see that your taxes have gone from $34,800,000 to $35,400,000. You're only up $600,000 over the course of five years, so you've done a very good job of keeping taxes stable in the community.
Can you say that one more time?
You've done a good job of keeping your taxes stable over the five-year period. If you look at your state aid, you can see that it's grown from $9 million up to $10,003,000. And as I always say to people, don't get too excited about that, because as you know, you've been living with gap elimination. So it's not that you're actually getting more money, you're finally getting what you were entitled to. So this was the last year of the elimination, so you won't see that kind of growth anymore because you're now back to where you would have been.
It's going to be flat.
Right, and you'll just live with the average growth that they give you. Refund of prior years, that account is just a capture for, you know, all year long, you're putting out purchase orders and you're paying vendors. And what this is, if a purchase order maybe was determined wasn't necessary or needed, it's canceled, the money gets put into revenue because you didn't want to put it back into the expense so you could re-spend it. So this is a way that you actually don't spend the money that you're canceling on those POs.
Here are your major expenditure categories that represent about 85% of the total expenditures. I'm going to highlight just a few of them that had significant variances over the prior year. Your general support, prior year had $4,109,000, this year had $4,368,000, increased about $259,000. Your teaching regular school, the prior year was $12,750,000 compared to current year of $13,778,000, had about a $1 million increase. And your pupil services, the prior year had $2.4 million compared to current year of $2.7 million, that was about $346,000 increase.
And again, just looking at the same categories over a five-year period, you can see that general support really is, it isn't that bigger growth when you compare it over five years. You can see it's up about $300,000. And a lot of that is just contractual obligations. That's a capture account for all the administration, for finance, for tax surchinaries, things like that. Teaching regular school, again, $12,500,000 and $13,000 is up to $13,700,000. Again, over the course of a period of time, it's basically contractual increases in the contracts, which you're obligated for. Programs for students with disabilities, again, can fluctuate depending on the number of children that are in the program, so it's kind of hard to benchmark that, but you can see it's typically in at around $7,000, $7,500,000 a year. We'll drop down to transportation. You can see there that you're actually $300,000 lower than you were five years ago. I was told tonight that a lot of that is you have a new contract. In addition, you've had fuel prices remaining low over the last couple of years, so you've actually received some savings on that. The teachers' retirement system, we didn't put the employees' retirement system on here, but both those retirement systems, you've probably heard over the last few years, how double-digit increases, it's, you know, you're tapping budgets. Well, if you look 2015, you were $2.9 million, you're down to $2.2. So the rates have finally started to come down a little bit, not back to where they were, but you're getting close. So you've had a little relief there. Unfortunately, health insurance is in the news every day, and you're obligated to pay whatever the premiums rise, and those premiums have been rising fairly steady over the last few years. So here's your fund balance on this slide. You can see again, if we just start in 2013, you had a total fund balance of about $6.5 million of the last number on the page, which is about 13.4% of your budget. And the second number up, you see $1,009,000, that's your unassigned. That's the amount of money that you have put away for emergencies to help tax relief in the following years, and you can see that's limited by the state to 4%. So that number's relatively stable at the 4%. But you can see your overall fund balance has grown to about 21%. And how you've done that is you've been able to put some money aside and restrict it for specific purposes. So if you look up to that category, the bucket called restricted, you can see you've put money away for repairs, you've put money away for some property and liability, you have money put away for tax surchinaries, every district faces that as people file those SARS every year. And you've put away money for employee benefits and accrued liabilities. That's the accumulated vacation and sick time that employees have earned that you might have to pay out when they retire. And again, you've put some money aside for the retirement system contributions, you have about $1.8 million. And you can see that, you know, that's an important category. If those rates start to rise again, double digits, you now have some relief, you can draw from that reserve. You've also put away almost $1 million for future capital projects, again, to help reduce your need for bonding in the future. So all these restrictions are going to help you in the future. I know that people look at them now, but they're for future use. So you've stayed at the 4%, and you've been very, you have a healthy fund balance at about 21%, and you have it put in reserves that you can utilize to help keep the relief on the budget. Any questions that we can answer for anybody about the audit?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Again, thank you very much for your time. I know you had a very busy night, and we do appreciate all the help that we received during the course of the audit.
Thank you very much.
The only question I have is for Guy Mosley. You had the meeting prior to this meeting, and just wanted to get the input.
You hear from our president, we're going to hear the president, Barbara Parmley, after the two reports.
Yeah, we also have a presentation from our internal auditors tonight from Acume on our technology information audit. They were both presented at the audit committee.
The one problem they found, and I'll just mention it now, the fact that the board members got doubled salaries.
Every year.
Every year we doubled it.
The board members do not get paid.
Anything times zero is zero.
That's a good one.
Hello. Okay, continuing our exciting itinerary this evening.
I think we had no one singing or dancing before you.
My associate Cathy Carson's here, she's our senior IT auditor, and she said, "It doesn't seem very crowded." I said, "Don't worry, they're all at home watching this on the television," right on the edge of their seat, but in any event. It's that time of the year, and actually, we do have a timely topic, information technology. And what I'll try to do is explain this in layman's terms, because it seems like every week that goes by, there's a new phrase that comes out, and of course, the big buzzword now is cyber security, and we'll mention that, too. But in any event, what we were doing here was looking at what we call information technology general computer controls. And given the fact that IT touches everything in a school district, from the teaching to the accounting, to the paying of the employees and what have you, it's a very important and a very broad topic that must have controls. Not only that the school district oversees, but you do have a lot of systems that are done for you on an outsourced basis. You'll hear the phrase "The RIC," which is the Lower Hudson Regional Information Center, and they process, I'd have to guess that they process just about all the districts' financial and accounting systems, you know, certainly in Putnam and Westchester Counties and several of the others. So what we were looking at is evaluating and assessing the adequacy of the procedures and the controls to ensure that the computer systems are managed in a controlled manner. And to do that, we looked at the eight areas that you see up there in front of you, and as you would expect, you'll see things like IT strategy and planning, but then right below it is the outsourced vendor management. We all know, any of us that are in the private sector or the public sector, that you've got to have business continuity planning, and that's one of the reasons why you do have the Lower Hudson Regional Information Center backing up a lot of your systems as well as the ones that you do here. We obviously then look at systems development, systems operations, and you can read the whole thing up there. What we did, and this is really a summary, a very abbreviated summary, because again, as I said, there's a very, a very real protocol that we have to go through, and it involves about, I'm not exaggerating, 50 different types of inquiries, tests, and what have you. But it starts with the people element, interviewing the business office and the IT staff, then looking to see that the board and department-level IT policies and procedures do exist, and that includes making certain that IT informs the board of what's going on and any changes that are necessary, and anything that may have happened, both good or bad. There is a strategic technology plan, Technology Committee, that meets on a regular basis and publishes their minutes. We certainly wanted to look at the third parties, the vendor contracts, and the service-level agreements that they are supposed to be providing you. And then we also look at network and application controls for access passwords, backup provision, systems monitoring, and Cathy personally went down to the RIC and reviewed the controls over processing of your application systems and the disaster recovery, and then we put together the report and recommendations. Now, if you remember, we have three ratings. Satisfactory is the best you're going to get, needs improvement is just that, and if you hear unsatisfactory, people usually do, you know, the ears do perk up a little because that's not a very good thing. I won't keep you in suspense, virtually all the areas we looked at were rated satisfactory. And, you know, it goes back, we've been working with you all for, I guess, what, 10 years, and it goes back to even, you know, when Michael's dad was here, all right? I mean, let's face it, the security was always tight on the IT systems, and you do a very good job, no doubt about it. There were three areas that we did cite for recommendations for improvement, and again, this did not mean that there's anything wrong, it's just where can we improve things? And one of them, you've got vendor service-level agreements, okay? You go through the proper bidding process, and the controls are all there, and the award is made and everything else. But then if you look at the contract, the vendor's supposed to be doing some things, too, a certain level of service. He or the organization is supposed to have had an outside review done in some instances of their security. So what we're suggesting here is that not in all instances do all your outsourced vendors do what they say they're going to do on the collateral stuff. Yes, they do provide, you know, the processing, the day-to-day processing, but there's some certain levels of service, you know, downtime and things like that, that really do need to be audited because they've told you that, so that's the recommendation there. By the way, all three of these recommendations management agrees with and is already moving on. The second one was the need for the periodic reviews of the system access rights for all applications to ensure only active and/or approved employees and/or consultants have access to the systems. Again, this is not a problem, we want to make certain it doesn't become a problem, because a lot of your outsourced systems or what have you, you can't change the code, which means you have to have consultants change the code. And when the consultants are finished changing the code, then they should be pulled off of it. They shouldn't be able to come back a year later and sneak into the accounting system or something like that. And we're not saying that happened, it hasn't happened, but this is just making certain that we codify it more on a regular basis. And then that wonderful word that I mentioned at the bottom there, cybersecurity training to all employees who have access to the systems and data. And this is something that everybody is doing, not just the private sector, not just the not-for-profits in the health, but colleges, universities, and school districts, because let's face it, you know, every day, somebody figures out a way to try to take, get into your system, steal identities and what have you. And there's a lot of sensitive data there in terms of student information, as well as, you know, the accounting system and everything else. So that's basically what we had to say, and I'll open up if there are any questions.
Any questions for anybody in the board?
No, thank you very much.
Yeah, I knew you all were going to have just all kinds of questions. Okay, no. Thank you very much.
Your comprehensive report made it not necessary to ask the questions. And I believe Ms. Parmley is going to, well, there was an audit committee earlier today to discuss both of these reports.
Hi, I'm Barbara Parmley. I was the chairperson of the Audit Committee last year, and I was re-elected, maybe by default, but, so we had our first meeting of the year, we have one new member. The committee is small, this year, five, which was really helpful because then it's easier for us to get a quorum. We listened to both auditors. They gave their, they presented their reports to us, they explained them, answered questions, answered any of our concerns. When they finished their reports, the Audit Committee decided to recommend accepting the report from the external auditor for the fiscal year ending June 2017 and the district responses to that report. We also recommend accepting the internal auditor's report on information technology, general computer controls, and we were pleased with both of their reports. So, Joe, what's your question?
Well, I just wanted to hear the report and talk.
Oh, okay, all right. Anybody else? No?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. The next on our agenda is a presentation of Special Education Report.
For those of you who don't know me, I'm Natalie Doherty, the Assistant Superintendent for Pupil Personnel Services and for Human Resources. Tonight, I'm going to just talk to you a little bit about what's going on in special education, give you some updates, and just to give you an overview. So we looked at, actually, coming off of the auditor's report, it kind of fits in well. Jill Figarella and I, over the summer, looked at how, what codes. So when you're looking at a per-pupil spending for students with disabilities, certain codes go into coming up with a total figure on what we spend for each student with a disability. So about two years ago, we looked at coding and recoded some things according to the state regulations. After careful review and some questions about our spending on students, we decided to take another look at the regulations and what was in our codes. And together, we, and with a company called MAG, and they help us determine codes and how we submit our reports to the state. So some of those things that were listed in those codes were able to be moved out of those codes. The per-pupil spending for students with disability really comes down to only instructional support services, really as your teachers. And we had a lot of things in there that could be moved, that should be moved off of those codes, so we did that. So we're expecting by the end, I think it takes like a full year, the state is always like running behind like a year or two, to come out, but we should see pretty significant changes in our per-pupil spending because of the changes we made. So we should see a significant decrease in that. So we should see a significant decrease in that. So one of the things was my salary, the CSC Chairperson. We had three E&amp;L teachers, that's English as New Learner teachers, teaching aides and assistants that were really for general education support services. Speech therapists can also be moved to another code, which is under pupil personnel, office assistants. And then some of these other minor things that don't make a huge impact, but they do impact overall when you combine them all. So these were also under those codes. So again, moving the services, like nursing services, for example, for some of our students, those are not just for special education services, and they're not instructional. And that's really the key word, is the instructional support services. So all of those things listed up there were moved and are being moved to different codes. So what's reported in the state report card should look very different over the next year or two. Some of our initiatives that I really wanted to just talk to you about, one of the things that we're continuing to work on is our use of the co-teaching model and how we function in the co-taught classroom. And if, I know you guys all know, but in case people that are out there that don't know, co-teaching is when a special educator and a general educator teach together in order to meet the needs of all of the students in the room, including those with students with disabilities. Often, we see in many districts and across the state, is the most frequently used is the one-teacher-one-assist, and that's really where there's one lead teacher and somebody who really assists students as needed and walking around the room. However, we felt, as a district and as a team, as a special education team, that we really wanted to share the teaching responsibilities more equally and engage the services of GNR and coaching, and our teachers go out and they attend conferences in order to introduce and to utilize the different, the other models. And one that we are really seeing take off is station teaching. And that kind of goes along with our philosophy of, you know, we've recently, over the past few years, invested in movable desks, flexible seating, and we talked about that a little bit up at our facilities committee just before. And with station teaching, what you can accomplish with two teachers in a room, working in small groups, with having three, four, sometimes five stations at any given time, where students rotate in and out, or the teachers rotate in and out of stations, you're able to really individualize your instruction much more. So that is really going in a great direction, and we'll continue that work this year. Our multi-sensory reading instruction, our teachers continue, every year we add one or two teachers to go out for training, and those are services like Wilson, PIF, which is Preventing Academic Failure, and they're really highly specialized reading instruction techniques in order to help our students with very specific kinds of reading disabilities, students with dyslexia. Then we're also continuing our work on transition planning for students with disability, working with students and their families in order to look for post-secondary opportunities that, whether they're college-bound or going out to work or going to vocational skills, to vocational programs. We work closely with Access VR and with local agencies in order to help our students transition for any kind of supports that are out there for after-school. Another big initiative that has been going on over the past few years is really making sure that our goals for our students on their IEPs, on their individual education plans, are really measurable, they're definable, and we're able to monitor their progress, collecting a lot of data that supports their progress. And that work will continue throughout this year. Some of our new initiatives this year for our students, the one big one that we're really having our teachers and school psychologists trained in is DBT, dialectical behavior therapy. It really is an approach, and you've heard me talk a lot about some of the mental health concerns that we've had throughout this entire region and here in Putnam Valley. And we felt the need, the clinical staff and I and the teachers felt the need to really respond to that more closely in the classroom. So we had our teachers signed up for training, and they're being trained, some of our school psychologists are already trained. And dialectical behavior therapy brings in different mindfulness activities, being able to tolerate distress, giving them direct coping skills in order to work right then and there on their difficulties, emotional regulation, and helping them during, whether it's in the classroom or in a private room, in order to give them the skills that they can leave here with, in order to help regulate themselves a little bit more and deal with, whether it's anxiety or depression or whatever it may be. So that is a really big push of ours, and I think that the students will certainly feel the positive benefit. And then the biggest initiative and one that we're really moving quickly on and having a lot of fun with is our new high school program, which we are going to work more of in a backwards design. So we're starting at the high school and hoping to bring it more of the philosophy, you heard me talk a little bit about it at our last meeting, working backwards, bringing it towards the middle school, and then down, shifting it down to the elementary school, just using sustainability approach. And the program is called TREC. And the teachers and I, and is it Principal Antariari, came up with TREC. And the philosophy itself really is about teaching resiliency, effort, and kindness, and using a sustainable approach. So really, we're looking at a hands-on, active, project-based learning experience for our students. I talked a little bit about this last time, and we really felt that our students that attend the smaller class placements really needed a buy-in and to participate in our larger community. So we're going to be working on, these are just a few ideas, but the gardens, they work in this TV studio, they'll work on a water filtration system that we're looking to implement. Then we're also, we're creating, we'll be taking a lot of trips and going out into the community. So the teachers got together, they worked on a point system based on positive behavior, and developed a point system so that they earn their ability to go out on these trips and have these positive experiences. And our school psychologist pushes in and does DBT work directly with our students. And finally, I just wanted to give you kind of an overview on how we performed with our scores last year. And it's cut off a little bit on the side there, but I can go through it. Those are our, up there is our ELA, math scores. The top portion is our ELA scores in grades three through eight. And all the way on the right-hand side is our value rank. Right now, we're compared, there are five schools in Putnam County. And we did really well. In grade three, as you can see, we were ranked fourth, but in grades six, seven, and eight, comparing students with disabilities to students with disabilities throughout Putnam County. In grades six, seven, and eight, we came in first, we ranked first. And in math, we came in pretty consistently in third, ranked third in the county, and in eighth grade, first in the county. So when you're ranking, when you're looking at students with disabilities against students with disabilities throughout Putnam County, I think we do really well. I'm very proud of our students and our staff, our faculty, and they work really hard and should be commended. Of course, we're always looking to improve and will continue to do so, but we do really well. So proud of that. And then if you look at our region scores, I don't know why it's not on the screen like that, I think it's the Google slide. So in global history, we came in, again, students with disabilities compared to other students with disabilities. Out of five schools, we came in second. Living environment, we came in fourth, ranked fourth. And again, US history, we were ranked first. ELA, we were ranked third, and Algebra I, we were ranked first. So out of five schools, we, again, did really well. So I just wanted to give you a brief, quick update. Do you have any questions or ideas, thoughts?
Let me just have a quick question. I don't know if you want to go back to the slide where you talked about the co-teach model?
Sure.
For a sec?
Yep. There we go.
There we go. So the co-teach model encompasses all of those arrows?
Yes.
Or it's not either-or?
It does. You can use any one of those models at any one time, you know, depends on the lesson, it depends on the students in front of you, it depends on the subject, it depends on actually your classroom configuration. So it, parallel teaching would be, for an example, two teachers, you know, if they have a large enough room where you kind of split your kids up according to skills or abilities, and you both go off and you teach, you might teach the same subject separately, you might teach different subjects, not different subjects, different topics separately. Team teaching, I've seen used where both teachers just simultaneously provide the instruction and know the content well enough that they can, they can team teach and kind of go at the same time. But again, the station teaching, for, I think for all of us, has really become the one that we use the most or like the most and feel that provides the most individualized small-group instruction and can work on, you know, bringing students through different skills. And I'll give you an example, in an ELA class, if you're working on vocabulary or writing and, or paragraph formation, you can really break those, break those groups up and individually teach to those different skills. And when you have three to five students, instead of an entire classroom and more of a lecture style, you're able to engage students a little bit differently.
Absolutely. And I've often heard the collaborative and co-teach, are they interchangeable?
They are.
Are they slightly different, interchangeable?
They are interchangeable. The state regulations call it integrated co-teaching, so ICT is often used as well, collaborative teaching, co-teaching, they're all interchangeable.
A little different than consultant-teacher direct?
Exactly.
Which is slightly different.
Yep. Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you. Do you want me to go out completely?
Maybe one board meeting, a psychologist can come and do some mindfulness activities for the board. It's not a bad idea.
The next topic is district goals, and our Director of Learning will present them. This was done collaboratively with all our administrators, and we did get feedback from others, actually, at the different schools. Dr. Luff went to the different faculty meetings, we received feedback on the goals that we had presented. If you remember, one of the earlier board meetings, we presented it in a format, in this format. And we would like to present it to you in a format, in the more linear format, summary format, that we created from this.
Good evening, thank you. Really, so my goal here tonight is just to close the loop. I know that we've had several conversations around the development of board goals, beginning as administrative team, and then through the Citizens Advisory Committee, then through the board, out to each of the buildings, where we got feedback from teachers. And now that we've captured all of that feedback from all of those different constituent groups, it brings us back here for what we're hoping will be an adoption of these goals. So just a reminder, this template, this action planning template is what we use to capture all the sort of, what was the 28 pages of goals in the past. So all of these things will still be captured, all the items that are going to happen, but really, we decided on focusing on the singular goal of sustaining PV and building relationships. And that's really what we tried to focus all of our goals on as we developed the following So this document here really just captures what was otherwise on that template in a format that's similar to those used in the past. And we just tried to capture what we called some of the high-level objectives under each of those action items. So under communications, we talk about engaging the community through participation. That was something we heard a lot of feedback through, from, through the Citizens Advisory Committee and through the Board of Ed. Expanding the district's use of social media and providing meaningful information, this is really that whole idea of a feedback loop. And again, that came directly from some of the parents who were present at the Citizens Advisory Committee.
So just going back to that first one, we just came from a meeting of our facilities, long-range planning, which exemplifies this process, where we are very deliberatively bringing in our community, and we had, must have had 35 people there, maybe 40 people, from the members of the community, to engaging in this dialogue about facilities and long-range planning. But you can see that at that meeting, again, building relationships was part of the goal. We had people talking and sharing their expertise in areas where they were interested in becoming involved in the district. So we are already involved in pursuing these objectives.
Thank you. So one of the topics that also came up during our Facilities Planning Committee today was this idea of creating active learning spaces. And that's really just to try to capture what learning looks like in 2017. And I had briefly talked about having gone through these schools, that I can say that the instruction looks nothing like the instruction did when I went to school here. The students learn very different than I learned when I went to school here, but the classrooms look almost identical to what the classrooms looked like when I was here. So we talked about hoping to be able to capture that idea of creating active learning spaces within each of the buildings and creating flexible learning spaces for students that match the type of instruction and learning that's happening in our buildings today. The other, the next one, under student-centered learning environments, sort of capturing all the work that's going around, going on around sustainability and our energy performance contract, and that group of teachers has been very busy both finding curricular entry points around the theme of sustainability, so they're not teaching new curriculum, but emphasizing sustainable practices within their existing curriculum, as well as establishing some building and district-wide projects. And I'm sure that group will be back reporting out in the near future some of their work. The next topic is educating the whole child. Really, our big focus is on social and emotional needs of students, and the district has been very busy and brought in several new programs to help guide that work, including our Yale Ruler, the DBT that Natalie just spoke about, character education, PBIS, and so on. Under educating the whole child, we have a review for our K-12 guidance services. This is another item that was brought up directly from the parents on the Citizens Advisory Committee. And planning the implementation of the high school later start time, which came from the board and a larger committee who discussed it last year. The next one, engaging instructional practices. This really is sort of in line with the IDE and LADDY work that's going on. And as a short little PSA, we have a parent evening, October 19th, to talk a little bit about what IDE and LADDY means. There'll be a quick presentation, and teachers will take all attendees through what a lesson may look like within a LADDY classroom. Natalie had just spoke about improving the effectiveness of our co-teaching models, and I know that work has already begun, and we've already begun to see transitions within the classrooms, utilizing data to inform our decisions. Each of the buildings has now met with a data team, and we have plans in place for how that data will be collected and disseminated to teachers so they can use it to inform their instruction. And partnering with community organizations, there's been a lot of discussion about how SELF particularly can get involved with more community organizations, and that's something that we plan on emphasizing throughout the school year. Sustaining a professional staff, so creating opportunities for cross-building professional development. That was something we did for the opening superintendents conference day, and it's something we plan on doing for the upcoming superintendents conference day. We got very positive feedback from everyone involved at the beginning of the school year, so we thought it was important to continue those practices into this school year. Part of that plan is to utilize our own professional staff. We have teacher facilitated We have teacher facilitated workshops planned for the afternoon, and that's an opportunity for our teachers to share some of the practices they use in their classroom with their colleagues, and then having discussions around best practices. Same is true for emphasizing team building and collaboration. I know we're planning on getting much of our support staff together and getting them involved in, in those types of activities. And we, there was a lot of work put into the new teacher orientation and the mentoring program this year. Both were completely revamped, but we want to be able to, we've collected some information, we've surveyed the participants, and we want to be able to refine those programs to make them even better next year. Under fiscal planning, the first piece is the Facilities Planning Committee, which had its first meeting tonight. It was very well-attended, and I'm excited to see where that work goes. And working with the building principals to make sure that our budgeting process is both transparent and that everyone's held accountable to making sure that we be as fiscally responsible as possible. And then the last piece is infrastructure, technology, and facilities, where the process of implementing, or will be implementing, our smart bond-funded projects, having finally gotten state approval. Our E.P.C., we, I believe we got state approval, and the work, we hope, will begin sometime this winter. Our Facilities Planning Committee plans a meeting at least once a month for the next four months, and we are nearing, for real this time, our relocation of the district office.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I was up there recently. I have to brag, I have a desk.
Congratulations.
We have no power, but I have a desk, so we're getting there.
Are things out of your car yet, Dr. Luft?
They're in my office now. They're in the high school. But I imagine, I know Pat and crew have been working very hard, and I know in the near future, we will be moved in there, and it looks like a very, it's going to be a great space for us to be all be back together. I know the special ed department misses us over at the elementary school. That's it, thank you.
So, I just have one, one question more about the process, and, and these goals are, they're a perfect reflection of what we did in the summer work and the beginning of the school year work. But in the past, and this is, you know, for our audience, we went through action step after action step for each goal. This is more of an overview, so there are still, you know, all of you have action steps to go with each of these goals, I would assume.
Most of those are in that template that we, you know, that, the matrix that we provided, which says, which tells about each of the schools and the work they do.
And, and, you know, we, we, just the fact that you're presenting, Dr. Luft, we, we've even changed our administrative structure. So, have we changed some of the processes? Like, the one that just jumped out at me was sustaining professional staff in terms of who approves staff development opportunities, because that was the true review, and now it seems like you would be a piece of that.
Now, Dr. Luft is the next level, and then I'm the final level.
Okay, great.
But we've had many conversations, and we are...
Well, it's a conversation that comes up every year, so...
Yes, yes.
And I forgot you existed, so I meant, in terms of the structure. Of course, I did not forget you existed. But that's why this kind of reminds me of the different steps.
Yes.
So, that's, I, I do like, even though it's abbreviated, it almost lets you look at it better, because it just, there's not as many words, you know, and you can just jump out on the key pieces, so.
I would suggest more words.
You like more words?
No, I mean, just a few more words. I, I think what's important on the fiscal planning goal is that we include the collective bargaining that's going to be coming up. I think that has to be, I mean, I know we're thinking about it, it's obviously there, but we need to make sure that it's included in our goals, that we come to conclusion with our collective bargaining units, because that's coming up, and there, you know, there are contracts that expire this year, so.
Next. I think it's 19. It's, it's the end of 19, next year we will do.
Okay.
I believe. I believe it's 19, isn't it?
1819 is the last year of the contract.
1819. Yeah, so next year would be the last year. And, yes, preparing for that is, is a lengthy process.
It's a non, yeah, it's constantly.
And we are, in fact, doing some of it, and through conversations and preparing, but yes, you're right.
So, I don't know, I mean, add it if, if we do or not, you know, just...
Yes, but, you know, you got me for a minute, I got a little...
I got a little panic, Mr. Fromm.
Oh, that's not something we'd say. Thanks.
Thank you.
That's great, thank you very much. I like it.
Okay.
They're really in line with what we talk about, so that's great.
So, in a couple of minutes, I'll talk about the superintendent's goals, but I'll start with the report. I just found today on my desk the newsletter from our student support counselor, and we, you know, we don't talk about that role much here, but she's really become an integral part of our RTI, our, you know, Response to Intervention. She is doing a lot of work with students who go to her as someone, you know, where they feel that need for confidentiality in a different way. And I also love the program because it connects with the community. It's a community program, she's not a school employee as such. And yet, she turns out a wonderful newsletter, which we receive every month, and she's, this year was, this, this month, this past month, was National Suicide Month, which is suicide prevention. And this is, is, is an enormous issue nationally, as is the opioid epidemic. And when you hear the numbers in terms of opioid use and overdoses, it's, it's astounding. It's over 66,000 people a year, and it's something that we need to keep in mind as a terrible scourge and a plague, and she does work with, with our students on that, on that issue. The Facilities Committee, I wanted to just let people know that we will be posting materials from the committee meetings on our website. We'll create, I think we can create a little box for that and have reports from the meetings that we will send out, but also post for the community at large. And the next meeting is on October 24th of that, of that meet, committee. There's also a later start committee meeting coming up on October 26th, and that, that committee really will be looking at implementation, the way we've come up with alternative solutions, solutions that we will put into place for the later start in September 2019. So, we will have reports from...
18.
I'm sorry, 18.
18.
18, no. 2018, next September. And so, we will have reports from our athletic department, from transportation, report, again, on the sleep research, that Ms. Entriere is actually doing her dissertation on this subject, so. And it's also interesting that the Nobel Prize, I think I might have mentioned this, was given to those researchers on sleep, the circadian rhythms. Those are the people who received the, the Nobel Prize just a short while ago. I also just recently saw a research project that was done by Mr. Scampoli in his psychology class, and he had each of the students graph their sleep for a week. And, you know, one line, you know, a, a line graph was, was done by each student showing the disparity, well, which showed the disparity of the sleep that they needed, according to biology of research, and the sleep that they got. One of the students was 34 hours sleep deprived, and many of them were in the 15-hour range, 10-hour range, and so on, but it's certainly an issue for our, for our students. I also have been hearing some wonderful feedback from students on their, on the schedule at the high school, that it's generally very well-received by the students and by many of the teachers as well, who are finding new ways to, to teach in that environment of the longer blocks. I want to mention that on Monday, this is quite exciting for us, Congressman Maloney, our congressman for this district, this area, will meet with our seniors, and there will be a town hall meeting. Students will have questions that they will be asking the congressman. It's a great, a great opportunity for our students, and for seniors in particular, and probably any juniors who, or others who wish to go, I'm sure there would be permission to go. But it's, it's something that Mr. Scampoli is doing for his, for his class, and we're quite excited that we've had this, we have this opportunity for our students to involve in civic engagement, which is one of our goals for our students. Also, interestingly enough, on that day, we have the first day of our Spirit Week at the high school, and it happens to be America as their first day, and they're all dressed in red, white, and blue, so he's going to be quite amazed.
Murica, be clear, it's Murica, not America. It's Murica, that's, that's, that's what they've been putting forward, apostrophe Murica.
Okay.
That, that's the, that's the theme, Murica.
Monday.
Really? Monday. Murica Monday.
Murica Monday, okay. Well, I will still call it America.
It's okay, Dr. Luft.
Of the generation that will insist on America. Also, I wanted to mention that this community read group that is coming up with a book for our community, the whole of Putnam Valley, will meet on October 17th and hopefully choose the book that we will be sharing across the community and in our school. Again, this is all, if you see, that a lot of these ideas do engage with our goals that we have for the district. And also, and I'm very, very proud of our community, our staff getting together to do this special benefit concert and dinner for Puerto Rico and the neighboring Caribbean countries. This is very exciting to have our teachers and students together doing the music. This was mentioned by our students, and I'm, I'm very proud of what they are putting together, and our own board member, Mr. Smith, will be performing.
Now, now, Mr. Smith, we always enjoy your performance.
We do. And it's, it's a way for people to get together around something that does, does good, is good. And we're quite excited to have these opportunities. And in fact, I invited the governor, Governor Cuomo, to come. He couldn't make it, but he is going to send his representative, and they were very complimentary about the work we're doing, so we should have a representative of the governor's office here. And again, we should be proud of our community and what we, we accomplished. Many of our community members, there are many with relatives, who are there in Puerto Rico or other islands, and this is a way for us to say we care. So, with that, I will present the superintendent's goals. Way too lengthy, but I'm just going to do a very general report. I'm not going to go through each and every one.
You're very busy, Dr. Luft.
Well, this gives you more a sense of the action that you were talking about, but the major vision or goal of, that I have as, as a leader in the school district is to allow our leaders, our administrators, our teachers, to fulfill their personal and professional goals as a teacher, or as a leader, as an administrator, through the opportunities that they have to do so. And to develop people, that's what we're here for. We develop people, and... And so, with that, I, you'll note, with my goals, a lot of the work that I do, I feel, is to support either initiatives or support goals, make things happen. I want to help people make things happen that they care about, that will help our students.
Pass it again, Maureen.
And we have done this for, you know, since I, I came, I believe, we've been trying to make things happen. You know, I've been recently in the Mandarin Chinese class at our middle school, and the students are so happy in that classroom. The teacher is remarkable, she is energetic, she is enthusiastic. And they are becoming part of a whole different culture. They are understanding what the world outside is, outside of Putnam Valley, the world that indeed they will have to be navigating as they move forth in their future. And they're, they're, it's more than language, because language, of course, is custom culture, as we are.
Culture, absolutely.
So, it's that type of thing. So, the first goal I have is to support initiatives that promote academic achievement of all students and student-centered learning through the improvement of curriculum instruction. And they include the new programs, they include the sustainability initiative, they include supporting and helping the high school principal in, in her endeavor to implement with her staff the IB program. And so, with that, I'll be accompanying her to professional development in IB, so that we're, you know, everyone is involved. Dr. Luft will be in, in training, our teachers are going to be in training for that. So, there's a great deal to do when you're changing and transforming the, the program parameters of a school and a school district. The block schedule, how do I support? How can I support the, the principal in her endeavor to, to, why is it that moving? To create that block schedule environment? That means helping with professional development, making sure it's happening, working with Dr. Luft on that, on that professional development for our teachers. And it's, it's a question of support, it's a question of collaboration, you'll see those words over and over again. We have a new, you know, one of the things we need to note in the district, we have one tenured principal, and that is our elementary principal. Our other principals are...
Still new.
Newer in terms of their, their jobs, their roles, and so we have a lot of work to do in ensuring that we are making it possible for them to succeed. That's, that's the goal, we want people to succeed. We want our children to succeed, we want our teachers, and we want our administrators to succeed. So, at the middle school, the administration is working on culture building, and, you know, my role is to help mentor and support the principal there and the assistant principal in reaching their vision for the school. And that means, you know, again, collaboration. I have to say that our district office administration works extremely well together, and we, you know, this is why we look forward to being together in our new facility. It's harder for us when we are separated. Now, not everybody totally agree with me, but I am hopeful that it's the case, but I know that, that it is. And, and that we enjoy working with each other and, and building, building, you know, creating, ensuring that we have the vision of this district in mind. Again, the other, the next goal, larger goal, promoting and monitoring initiatives to create a supportive, safe, and productive learning environment for students and staff. Here, we have all the initiatives that Dr. Luft talked about, and, and helping to support the assistant principal, for example, in her effort to bring DBT to the school, the coping strategies, collaborating in all of those areas. One important area for us this year, of course, the later start initiative, again, support of, of that process and bringing people together to make that happen, supporting the review of the guidance and clinical services as one of our initiatives this year. Promoting the professional growth of our teachers. Oops. What happened here? I lost my, oops. Got it, I got it. Promoting the professional growth, uh, growth of our teachers and the new administrative staff. In other words, with the new administrative staff, you're building a leadership team. So, we are involved in executive coaching at BOSI's, working together on that, so that our team is most effective. Supporting our new Director of Learning as he forges strong alliances with staff and collaborates in building and shaping curriculum infrastructure. And he's doing that constantly. He's, he's been everywhere. He is also observing our new teachers, and he's made a very important place already for himself as someone to go to. You always can know whether someone is succeeding when you see people going to them. You could, you can map it, and it's happening quite regularly. And we intend to be at the high school a lot, even though we won't be stationed here. Ms. Doherty, Dr. Luft, and myself are going to have a space here. You know, we'll, we'll have a, one of the smaller spaces in the back that we'll be able to schedule in and work in with staff, schedule time to be here. Generate more powerful strategies to promote communication. I think communication, again, is one of those struggles that we always have, especially now with the new media, and how do we utilize it effectively? I think we're, we keep getting better in that. Our, our high school... Our high school principal's constantly tweeting things, getting things out. Kids are always talking about what, how they've seen themselves in different things that she puts out there, parents see it. And I think it's wonderful that our administrators are becoming more and more sophisticated in that area. We're doing more, bringing parents in, bringing community members in. We have, Dr. Luff has arranged for a meeting on the IDE program, the LADDY classroom, so that parents can ask their questions and hear from people in that program. Supporting our district of operations, the facilities and technology network planning. Again, the facilities planning committee will be a major initiative, collaborating with technology administrator in expending the state bond funds, and again, the relocation of the district office, which we feel will promote and build more, even more effective relationships. Collaborating with the treasurer in short and long-term budget development. I think the fiscal planning piece is extremely important as we look at our finances, we look at programs that we want to continue to grow and we want to build, our STEAM programs and STEM programs, our studio, our TV studio, and our film and filmmaking programs. These require funding and thought as to how we can ensure their success and ensure students' success. So those are my goals and their, all of the different action items within them.
And as is appropriate, they mirror the district goals, which is what they're supposed to do.
They mirror the district goals, exactly.
Any questions, self questions?
Dr. Luff, are we hearing from you on a curriculum report, or were the goals it for today?
No, you don't get off that easy.
Okay, no, I love curriculum reports. And I do want to say, I have also heard from students, I was going, I won't put the students on the spot, but I'd love to hear from them in the future. Students have come to me and said, we thought 80 minutes of class time would be ridiculous, and they're loving the longer. Really, really pleasantly surprised from what I'm hearing.
Yeah, so there's a pretty good amount of students that actually really love the block scheduling, and it's because they have so much, you know, with 40 minutes, you kind of, you get to class, you take out your books, you start to focus, and then you're thinking about when the period ends, like, okay, five more minutes, then I can go eat lunch, and then the next class, what do I have to, do I have my homework done for that class? So by having 80 minutes, I think that in the classroom, I've definitely seen students more engaged in learning, and they actually are looking towards, like, participating in the class, not getting through the class. And it's also really helpful some days when you think, well, I don't have that class tomorrow, so I can really focus on my physics homework tonight, and I don't have to worry about doing homework for nine different subjects all in once. I can kind of balance homework and all these different things and design my schedule the way I want it, and I think that's the opinion of many of the students I've talked to.
And this was not rehearsed, thank you very much. When I mention it, you see, there's always skepticism. There's that little snicker of Saturday Night Live-type snicker. And but, when it's student says it. And I've had students say it with a look of surprise. Fake news. Who'd know? I really like 80 minutes, but that was well said, thank you very much. Beat that, Dr. Wilson.
I should let you speak for me. So from a district perspective, we actually held a emergency response training at the firehouse, district response, emergency response team, as well as each building's, members from each building's team went and met. We had a consultant there from BOSI's reviewing the ICS protocol, and then we did some tabletop exercises, how would we respond to certain events? So it was very eye-opening for someone like myself who was new, and even more senior members of the staff were made aware of changes and protocols and practices, so it was definitely a worthwhile experience. I know that, because we can't empty all the buildings simultaneously, those who missed that training will have a smaller training during the superintendent's conference day, and Mr. Bellino is putting that together. Our IDE LADDY training continues. I know our consultant was here recently. We actually have two exciting things coming up. On the 17th, we're doing administrative walkthroughs, so our administrative team is breaking into two groups, we're scheduled into classrooms where we actually get to see live teaching and then, and then debriefing on what we've seen. Although some of us have seen LADDY classrooms and observed them before, some of our colleagues, especially our elementary school colleagues who don't have any teachers yet trained, it'll be a new experience for them, so it'll be great for them to see what's different and what it looks like within a LADDY classroom. Our instructional technology support, provided by Jennifer Kron, continues. She's had a great job of supporting both our support and teaching staff, and that support varies from helping our processes as well as some of our instructional strategies. So a quick example is, we created a field trip permission form that's now on a Google Form, so no more paper, back and forth, now that field trip request form is done right through the computer, and there's many other types, those types of efficiencies that she's worked directly with the offices, as well as the obvious instructional support. Our TCI training has been going on, it's being provided by two members of our own staff that were trained to be trainers, and we have... How many people? Twelve?
Twelve.
There's quite a number of teachers and support staff members in there. I've stopped in a couple of times. They keep begging me to participate, I think they just wanted to hold me, throw me on the ground or something. So it's a valuable training, and they preach that really the first goal is to de-escalate and to avoid having ever needing to get to the point. But if you get to that point, how to do it safely and efficiently, so make sure that everyone's safe. So it's great to have that number of people trained, and it's great that they emphasize de-escalation is really our number-one priority.
No, I think that your point about the de-escalation, you know, one of our teachers who took it last year, Brian Cosma, just a general education teacher, really talked about how it changed how he speaks to children, not that, he's always had positive relationships and great relationships, but really like how to engage students in a different way. And I think that is the goal, especially when you're working with certain student populations, you're really just learning how to use your language efficiently and carefully to engage students and to not have them escalate or become more frustrated.
I've attended the training myself, and I remember one training said, if you know it, there's a chance you'll never need to use it.
Exactly.
You know, once you've been trained.
That's the goal.
So our Yale ruler implementation continues. We have a large number of teachers that signed up to complete an online class. It's about a two-hour online course that takes them through the emotional intelligence framework, and classroom observations have begun. It's actually been one of the highlights of the last couple of weeks, getting in and seeing classes, seeing instruction happening, and then having an opportunity to debrief with teachers afterwards. I've truly seen in just the past week some really exemplar lessons and some great teaching, so I was very excited to get into classrooms and see that. The elementary school, they did their final, I did my final presentation on goals and EPPR with them, that was right after the last board meeting, and they provided feedback, which was included in the template we used to create the goals we shared tonight. Their I-Radi assessment was administered for grades two through four. They've begun having their data meetings to review AIS data with the grade-level teachers. The Cove Care lessons, which are drug awareness prevention and wise choices, have begun. Math curriculum planning, updating their curriculum maps is occurring at the elementary school. Yale ruler, they're working on starting to get some language to set their charter for the each building. And they have a bunch of public service announcements looking ahead, an ENL breakfast on October 20th, the kindergarten show also on October 20th at 9:45, math homework help night, October 24th from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. They have the student memorial celebration for Fatima on October 25th at 4:00 p.m. The parent-teacher conferences, this is noteworthy because there was a change, will be held on November 2nd, 7th, and 9th, I believe all of those are afternoon conferences, so that's been a slight change from the original schedule, but I know that communication has gone out to all the parents, and their gym show is scheduled for November 15th at 7:00 p.m. The middle school has continued its mentor training, I was just there the other day. Their focus was on observations and analysis rubric. We actually opened it up to all non-tenured staff, because we thought it was a valuable lesson or a conversation for each of them, so that went well. The ELA and math curriculum development work continues. We established new committees, and they're really taking a critical lens to look at what they've done in the past and how it can be changed, to make sure it's aligned to standards, to make sure that it's rigorous, and to make sure that it's engaging for students. They also have the Cove Care lessons occurring, as well as working on their building charter. The high school, Dr. Wilson and myself met with representatives from WCC. We talked about possibility of setting up STEM partnerships with their satellite office right there in P-Skill. They have fully functional labs and lots of equipment set up there, so that's something that we're exploring along with the high school administration. One of our own students, Aleah Steele, she's a member of this Think STEAM committee, which is bringing girls into STEAM fields. I don't think I realized initially when she approached me about offering this workshop that the founder of this Think STEAM group, which is now in six states, have done 22 presentations, including at Apple, Google, other, other like Fortune 500 companies, is actually a junior at Lakeland High School. It's the girl who founded it, and it's a non-for-profit. So Aleah's been involved in, for a long time, and she's now been trained to host these. So we hosted our own first training. They talked about basic HTML and had some of the girls who showed up design their first website and really get sort of basic knowledge, and I know they have opportunities to join mentorship programs, and we hope to offer more workshops. So it was something very impressive to see, offered by one of our own ninth-grade student to other girls within Putnam Valley. So our ninth grade is working on having literacy meetings to address the reading deficiencies identified from eighth grade, so using the data we got from the middle school to identify interventions for those students. IB trainings are being scheduled, and some have already started participating in them. Teachers are introduced to My IB platform, which is curriculum and resources. There, we've had a conference call with our Yale consultant at the high school to figure out how to best roll it out here, and they had their back-to-school night, and it was a very large turnout. That's it, thank you.
Any questions or comments? And I don't believe I see any PTA, PTSA representatives. So I'd like to open it up to public contribution on any of the agenda items thus far. Anything from the board thus far? Okay, let's move along to new business. Ms. Farrar, will you start with number one?
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Sarah Roberts to a part-time position as a speech-language therapist for a maximum of nine hours per week. At the rate, I could use our services, at the rate of $58.73 per hour effective October 17th, 2017, Ms. Roberts holds professional certification in speech and language disabilities.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number two.
Resolved to accept the information technology audit report completed by Acum Partners, the district's internal auditors, in August of 2017, as per document number 72/18 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number three.
Resolved to approve the disposal of the out-of-date textbooks listed on document number 73/18 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number four.
Resolved to accept a fiscal external audit report, including extra classroom activity funds and management letter for the fiscal year ending June 2017 for the Putnam Valley Central School District, as per document 74/18 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting, completed by Bennett Kielson Storch Desantis, a division of O'Connor Davis Munds and Dobins, the independent external auditors of the district.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number five.
Resolved on the recommendation of superintendent of schools to re-adopt the district's special education plan as per document number 7518 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number six.
Resolved to adopt the 2017-18 district goals as per document number 76/18 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving along to the consent agenda?
Resolved to approve the consent agenda, items two through 10, as presented to the board at this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
We're approving a budget transfer of the amount of approximately $32,000 from health benefits to the Putnam Valley Federation PBFT Welfare Fund for dental and vision care to cover some costs of some premiums. We're accepting a generous donation of a Zeiss Primo Start microscope on behalf of employee Raffiella, and I apologize, Raffiella, Zeiss Stinchek, valued at just over $2,000 for the high school. We're accepting a generous donation of $100 from DJ Travis Landscaping for the summer reading program at the elementary school. We're approving 10 faculty staff to help at homework nights at the elementary school for a maximum of two hours each. We're appointing Kurt Roell as the high school peer mediation facilitator for the school year, which is approximately 20 hours. We're approving Denise Hayes to provide up to one hours of reading services per week at the elementary school, two 30-minute sessions. We're approving additions to the substitute tutor list. We're approving payments to the, oops, my notes disappeared. We're approving payments to the high school guidance council for work that she does, they do at the middle school when the middle school guidance is not available, and we're approving a consulting agreement with Pamela Perrell for speech and language services and auditory processing lessons and services for students when they need it.
There was questions, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to open it up to public contribution on any topic. Anything again from the board?
I have a couple of things. One, I want to publicly thank everyone who came to the meeting earlier tonight on the facilities planning committee, and really a fantastic turnout, and the people just are, have an amazing array of talents they can help us with, and everybody is there for the right reason, which is fantastic, to make this district, you know, be better in the future for our children, to be simple about it. Also, I know it was in a students' report, but I've had the pleasure of going to a few of the girls' soccer games, and they are fantastic. They have that Putnam Valley grit that we're famous for, and they're undefeated, and they're going to go into, it's already the best season the girls' soccer team has ever had, and they won the league championship, and really proud of them, because I've seen them work on it for 10 years, and that's, this is the culmination of that, so good for them.
If you don't go to the Putnam Valley School District homepage, just to remind the community that there's a hurricane relief to benefit Puerto Rico's people and the people in the Virgin Islands, there's a concert and a potluck dinner, and it's on October 17th, Tuesday, the dinner is from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. in this room, the high school cafeteria, and from 7:00 to 8:00 in the Performing Arts Center is the concert. So please try to come to help other citizens of the United States.
Just piggybacking, Ms. Riddle, you said, I know there are many senior night celebrations this week, I know the girls' soccer is Saturday at 6:00 o'clock, I believe field hockey is tomorrow, and there's a few others in the next few days, so if you can't make it out, if you see a senior athlete, congratulate them, it's a big deal. It's a big deal to see your senior career come to a happy close in a lot of cases, so... Anything else?
I wanted to just start a, either a thought process or a brief discussion about something that we had gotten in the email about the ticket prices for the shows in the pack, and that it may be necessary to raise a couple of the prices, et cetera. And it really got me to thinking a lot about, you know, we have a great arts program here, and nobody loves it more than I do. But I began thinking about, when we thought about ticket prices, thinking about perhaps trying to help guide the policy there, since we'll be asked to, okay, probably, a trying to help guide the policy there, since we'll be asked to okay probably a policy on those ticket prices, and perhaps say that we want to keep student prices in particular at a certain amount as a policy. My suggestion for, personally, I would love to see students go free to those shows, but I know that's probably setting too low a bar. But, you know, I think about kids going and wanting to see their friends in the soccer games and stuff, and they get to go to those for free until the sectionals, you know? But I, I really think maybe trying to, to put those prices at perhaps $5 for students and hold them there. It seems like the right thing to do for me, and I'd be interested in what others, others think. You know, adult prices, if we change those, adults can make a judgment whether or not they want to go or not to a show. But students, I want them to be able to get the benefits of being an audience member at those shows.
What are the student prices now?
Right now, I think they're at $6, if I'm correct. And I think that we're going to hold them at $6. But it, it's just struck me that, that it's not just the students in our arts programs who are performing that are getting so much out of these things, but students who maybe aren't going to ever get a chance to go to the city, to see a professional show, or other theaters, et cetera, have a chance to see a quality performance like our, our students put on. And we want to just keep those prices low for those students, so they're not in any way restricted going there. And I just think it would be a nice thing for us to try to, to set as a, a line where we want to try and do that in the future.
I think $5 forever sounds good to me. And then, if they have to make up the rest in adult prices, they'll do the math on that, right?
It's been a six for about a year or so, two years? We've moved it to six?
I don't know. I mean, I...
It's been a long time. A couple of years.
I know, I know it's varied.
I like five better. It's easier to make change.
Yeah, and you know, it's, it's, it really is something that, that students who attend the shows are getting something out of the show. They're not just, you know, secondary. They're really getting something out of the show, and I don't want anybody to feel as, as though there's any barrier at all to that, to doing that. So, it's just my suggestion.
And the tickets actually are more expensive than the tickets are, because they're using a ticket leap or whatever they're using, and there's a fee. So, it, just as though, just as if you're, just as if you're going Ticketmaster, you do get a fee because they're using that, so a $6 ticket is like an $8 ticket or something along those lines. So...
Can they buy them at the box office still? I don't even know that.
You can still buy them at the door.
Without the fee, perhaps, yeah. And I know, I know my other board members are, you know, sometimes we're offered, "If you want to come see the show, we can hold some tickets for you for free." And I know that board members often just pay to go and see the show anyway, and, and perhaps that's a way that we can even donate our tickets towards students, you know, just to, if there's a student in need, that perhaps some of our counselors who might know that situation could donate our tickets to those students or whatever. But just as a general thing, I think it'd be a nice thing to try and hold that line, so students are never feeling like, "Oh, well, other people can go, but I can't go this time," you know?
Well, I think you do raise one point, and when you were talking, I was actually going to talk to Natalie about our pupil personnel services do work to identify with anything, whether it's a field trip, whether it's anything that is above and beyond or extra for those students who don't feel. And I think it is important to say publicly that a show isn't a luxury. It is a, it is an opportunity, so that if, you know, our pupil personnel services really are aware that that's something that somebody can ask, you know, about.
And we do often, I often get phone calls from the staff at any one of the three buildings, and if they know a student is in need and wants to attend a show, or they think it's a good event, you know, a positive event for that student, we, we make sure that the students are able to attend frequently.
In terms of making a decision about pricing, can you just take this feedback back to, well, it would be, we'll bring it to the board at the next board meeting. I've had conversations with, with Susie Cummings, with Jeremy Serra, and there are different perspectives. They see the $6 as a lot less than it costs to go to a movie, or, which most people aren't doing anymore either, I guess. But they felt the $6 was fair, has been, but I also certainly see the board's point of view with regard to keeping that price as low as possible for students, and actually having more opportunity for students to see it without cost if they, if they have the need. I think it's very important to get our students and our community to enjoy what we have to offer here. And I know we do a free show, just for the musical, for our senior citizens. We do provide that, and have for, for years here, they've done that. And you mentioned sectionals. I know it's an $8 fee to go to a sectional game, so we're still, and sometimes more, you know, depending on the sport, so... But it's, it's, you know, we certainly, I think the message is, we do not want to price our students out of coming, so, you know. Come back to us with... And is this something we actually approve, or do you just do it?
I don't know. I have never, we've never approved it.
No, it's not really, no.
I don't know if it is a vote. I think it's something they, it's just...
It's essentially fundraising.
Yes.
Essentially, they're fundraising.
It's their fundraising because it's a club, right? Got it. So, basically, we're asking them to lower the cost to $5.
Or, or, come back with why they don't want to.
Yeah. You know, I think it's a suggestion, but, yeah.
And, I guess that's it. A motion to adjourn the work session business meeting.
Jiggle.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.